Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Rutherford County Schools' regular meeting. First order of business, the Pledge of Allegiance led tonight by Board Member Lisa Moore.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Audience, the board would appreciate it if you would join us for a moment of silence, please. Before we get to the number four there, I want to admit to an omission last night, and I apologize, and I still haven't talked to him, but our new Transportation Director, Mr. Jason Everett, is with us again tonight. He was with us last night, and I did not say one word about it, and that is my fault, and I apologize, and welcome. Number four, approval of agenda. We didn't move anything from last night, so I need a motion.
No move.
Thank you, Mr. Blair, a second. I think Mr. Young won that, I think. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Number five, approval of consent agenda. One thing we did change last night, and that is G, the bid on synthetic turf at Blackman High, that will be tabled until the 16th, which is 16th of August, which is the next time we meet. Other than that, there were no changes, so I need a motion to approve. Thank you, Mr. Hodge, a second. And Mr. Estes, thank you. If there are no comments, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Bush, do we have any visitors that wish to speak tonight that you know? Did they? No? Okay, no visitors. We're going to skip number seven for right now. We'll come back to it in just a few minutes, most likely. Let's go to facilities. Mr. Director, part eight.
All right, project updates. Mr. Lee.
We'll start with Rocky Fork Elementary. RG Anderson has been awarded the project based on bids. Received May 15, 2018. Grading for the building pad is underway. Middle Tennessee Electric has completed the first phase of the new power grid. We also met with the town of Smyrna's utility department today to go over water installations, and the contractor's been released to begin that work. Rockville High School grading is 95 percent complete on the athletic fields, and concrete work is well underway. The contractor is planning to rig all the ball fields this fall. Stadium foundation and concession stand foundations are complete, and work is progressing well on the building itself. Work is continuing on the second-floor classroom areas with roof trusses underway on the north and south ends. Final roofing has begun over the cafeteria, CTE wing, and the gyms. The new sewer line extension for Rockville Elementary was completed this week. Oakland Middle School Annex slab-on-grade work for all additions is now complete. Exterior walls are complete on the dining addition and up to the second-floor level of the main addition. Bar joist installation is complete for the second floor and the gym. Roofing for the gym will begin this week, and the dining addition the following week. Brickwork is well underway and making good progress. Geothermal well operation across the street is now 75 percent complete. Smyrna Middle School addition, the state fire marshal has granted a temporary seat certificate of occupancy for the new construction, pending the installation of additional doors that they requested after construction was complete. These doors are scheduled to arrive any day now, and should take just two to three days to get installed. Once they're installed, we will be able to obtain our final certificate of occupancy. Segal High School, the masonry contractor has completed the CMU load-bearing walls. Exterior brickwork has been completed on the classrooms. Spray fireproofing has been completed in the classroom areas on the first and second floor. Once the roofing is completed in the science lecture art room area, these areas will be fireproofed prior to the installation of ductwork in the electrical room. Roofing contractor is presently roofing the science lecture hall and should be completed in this area by the end of July. Lightweight truss installation is 50 percent complete on the classroom addition. The HVAC contractor is currently finishing up the installation of the new chill water lines that have been tied into the main building. They are also installing the supply and return ducts in the classroom area. Central Magnet School HVAC work. The HVAC contractor has completed the installation of the roof curbs, and the HVAC units have been set on the roof. The contractor is currently finishing up the installation of ductwork above ceiling, and the contractor is slated to reinstall the ceiling begin the week of the 23rd. Riverdale High School re-roof. Roofing contractor has completed the re-roof on three sections, M, K, and L, and will be completed with the main building by the end of July, weather permitting. Gymnasium roof will be the last area to be roofed. The entire complex re-roofing should be completed by the end of this month. Central Magnet School re-roof. The contractor has completed the removal of the gravel from the roof surface in preparation for installation of dens deck materials to receive the EPDM roof. The contractor will begin re-roof once he's completed the final building at Riverdale. Central Magnet additional parking. A pre-con meeting was held with the city on July 6 to begin preparation for construction. The contractor's survey crew was on-site July 9, and they began installing silk fence on July 10. The contractor will begin excavation of the topsoil and begin preparing subgrade for proof roll once it dries out. Completes my list for today.
Questions for Mr. Lee.
The Smyrna Middle School project, you mentioned the certificate of occupancy, and it brought to mind that I had a conversation with Mr. Lucre about an open house. That will occur before our next school board meeting. Ms. Joyce probably knows more about that than I do. Director, you may know.
She, I did recall her speaking with Mr. Lucre, and I know it's going to be on a Sunday, but I don't know the date.
All right. I believe it's August the 5th, but I would alert my fellow board members the opportunity to see that facility and interact with the people in that area. Keep your eyes open to an email that will help us to remember that occasion.
Anything else? Part B.
All right, Segal Middle School Principal Kim Stoker has requested permission to build a 12-by-20-foot metal storage building with a concrete slab. This structure will be located inside the practice field fence in the southwest corner. The structure will be similar to the one already erected and on-site. Segal will be responsible for applying for all permits and funding provided by the Segal Middle Football Count. Funds to be available before construction starts. Estimated cost for the project is approximately $3,000. The concrete slab has been donated. Engineering and construction has reviewed this project and recommends approval. Motion to approve Segal Middle School football 12-by-20-foot storage building.
Questions? Need a motion? Mr. Young, thank you, a second.
A second.
Mr. Hodge, thank you. Any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Part C.
Segal Middle School Principal Kim Stoker has requested permission to build a 20-foot-by-60-foot addition to the existing baseball building. The building addition will match all the existing structures. Appropriate permits will be applied for, and funding will be provided by the Segal Middle School boosters. All funding will be available prior to the starting of construction. Estimated budget for this project is $19,000. Engineering and construction has reviewed the project and recommends approval. Motion to approve Segal Middle School baseball 20-by-60-foot, 66-foot addition as presented.
Questions for the director?
This project is in addition to a building that's already there, and I'm accustomed to these coming with a disclaimer about Title IX implications that we may or may not have here. I know that this is going to be quite a bit of baseball emphasis, and just don't want to leave the softball folks behind with Title IX implications.
Me and Mr. Lee spoke about that. If you want to follow up with that, Mr. Lee.
In the school request form that the school has to submit, question or item number six is a gender equity question, and the principal has stated that this does not create any gender equity issues.
Okay. Oh, my. Thank you, Ms. Estes, a second. Mr. Holliday, thank you. Any further comment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. We're going to interrupt this message with another message. Mr. Director?
Yes, we'd like to recognize our new principal at John Coleman Elementary. Her name is Kristy Brown. She's been in education for 18 years, most recently as an assistant principal at David Urie Elementary. She has taught at Christiana Elementary. She was the Teacher of the Year there. She's been an interventionist coach. She's got a master's degree from Trevecca Nazarene in Nashville, and she just graduated two years ago from the aspiring administrative academy. Now, one of the things that jumped out at me is a quote that she made when she was recommended for this position and accepted it. She says that "John Coleman Elementary, we will work hard to ensure every child sees himself or herself as a masterpiece in making."
Yes, that's our theme this year at John Coleman. I'm sorry I'm late. Traffic is not fun to get from Smyrna here really quickly, but thank you so much for this opportunity, first of all. It means so much to me, and I'm so excited. The preparation I've had being an RTI coach and then under the leadership of Mr. Bolden has been phenomenal preparation. I'm very excited. Our theme this year is JCE, a masterpiece in the making, and so we're getting geared up to prepare our home-delivery bags to really set that theme off and get excited and kick that off. So, just looking forward to continuing that wonderful foundation that Ms. Ann Haley already laid and continuing, moving forward with supporting the teachers to give every child what they need to be successful. That's my goal this year. Yes, very excited. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you. If I could take a few minutes to... I had the opportunity to visit John Coleman Elementary, and I don't know how many of you have, but on this day, I was greeted at the door by a kindergarten student who proceeded to stick his hand out, look me in the eye, and say, "Good morning, Mrs. Spurlock. We're happy to have you at John Coleman Elementary." So, I'll be honest with you, I was blown away with what's going on down there. And I know Ms. Brown will continue on the work that has already taken place and build upon it, so we thank you. Part D.
All right, part D. Blackman Middle School. Engineering and construction would like to proceed with the demolition of the wrestling building that burned. Bids have been solicited for the three contractors, two of those of being no bids. Engineering would like to award the demolition to Demo Plus for a price of $18,900. Motion to approve and award demolition of the Blackman Middle School wrestling building to Demo Plus for $18,900.
Questions or a motion?
Move for approval?
Thank you, Mr. Holliday. A second?
Second.
Ms. Moore, thank you. If there are no comments, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Part E.
Rocky Fork Elementary. RG Anderson contacted engineering construction to notify us that Waller Masonry has withdrawn their bid. They've requested to move to the next bidder, which was RG Masonry. This is an increase in cost of $400,000. This increase is within our budget, and RG Anderson will still be the low bidder. Engineering and construction has discussed this matter with RG Anderson and recommends adding $200,000 to the contract through a change order now, and the other $200,000 be provided through any savings from the project at the end of the construction. Should there be no savings, no additional funds will be added. Motion to approve?
Some.
Wait a minute.
Motion to approve adding $200,000 through change order and the balance to be funded from the project savings if available. This funding is due to Wall and Masonry withdrawing their bid.
Ms. Moore, did you want to...
I'll still move to approve.
Okay, excellent. A second from Mr. Blair, thank you. If there are no comments, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Part F.
All right, lease from the city of Eagleville for practice field. The Board of Education had previously leased an area owned by Craig Sewell for a practice field for Eagleville High School under a no-rent lease. The city of Eagleville now owns the parcel and is willing to lease it to the Board of Education at no rent. The lease can be terminated by either party upon giving the other 30 days' advance written notice. A copy of the proposed lease is attached. Motion to approve the Board of Education to enter into a lease with the city of Eagleville for the practice field in the form of approved by the Board Attorney, Jeff Reed.
No move. Mr. Blair, thank you. A second. Mr. Estes, thank you. Any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And no one is. Financial matters.
All right, financial matters. Federal Projects Financial Update by Ms. Kim Williams.
Kim can talk today. All right.
A little bit.
Voice has improved. Welcome, Ms. Williams.
Thank you very much. I appreciate being here. As Mr. Blair said, I'll speak close to the microphone, and I think that will help considerably. First of all, thank you very much for allowing me to speak to you tonight. This is one of my favorite topics, is very near and dear to me, and that's the financial management of federal funds. When I first started working here 20 years ago, one of the first jobs I had in front of me was to hire and train a federal bookkeeper. But before I could train her, I needed to learn it myself. So, that's when I began this very long relationship with the State Department of Education, their Department of Fiscal Management, and I just have wonderful things to say about the state with the guidance that they provide, the education and the continued training provided throughout the years. But what I'd like to start with, Matt Brown is our technology guru right now, and there are a couple of things I would like to share with you, the things that I've learned over the years. And the first, and I hope it's legible enough, this came from James Evans. Has provided a fact book dated May of 2018, and this is a summary of the per pupil expenditures of Rutherford County Schools over the past few years. You'll notice the blue slice, that's the amount of federal funding that we receive on the per pupil expenditure, 6.64 percent. You'll notice that the blue slice is by far the smallest amount of money that we receive, but I would say one thing I have learned over the years, that it is by far the greatest amount of reporting and the legal complexity of any fund that we have. And I think that's what makes federal funds so different and what sets it aside from anyone else, any other fund. Even Jeff, I'm sorry, the General Purpose Operating Fund, it's pretty complex. It's not nearly the dollars, but the requirements are tremendous. And the local funding, the state funding, the federal funding. The federal funding that we've, the amount that we've received over the last five years is just under $80 million. And so, these federal funds, I think that's about all I've got to show you on that slide on the per pupil expenditure. I've got a little bit of history I'll share, and then I've got some fun facts I want to share with you. Federal funds have been around, federal education funds have been around over 50 years now. First started in Lyndon Johnson's administration, his War on Poverty in 1965, and the administration's goal was to provide equalized funding for those students who lived in high-poverty areas. Most of the funding came from property taxes, and that left so many of our students out of the financial loop. In 1975, additional legislation came through for the IDEA, the Children with Disabilities. And then in 1984, Carl Perkins came around, and that's for our CTE and vocational. Now, these funds have been reauthorized many, many times. The 1965 Elementary and Secondary Education Act has been reauthorized eight times. The latest version is what we operate under today, Every Student Succeeds Act. The IDEA has, that's been reauthorized four times, and Carl Perkins is, as a matter of fact, going through another reauthorization very soon. It's Perkins Five, and we'll be seeing some changes on that. So, change in administration, either state administration governors or the president, and oftentimes the first priority is to update and reauthorize education. So, just a few fun facts, because that's what we do in accounting. We have lots of data and figures, and so I didn't want to overwhelm you with a lot of information, but I did pick out just a few things. That, like I said earlier, just over the past few years, starting with fiscal year 2015 and going into this new year that we're currently in, we have over $80 million in federal and state awards. And I've given you, I've passed out, there's a spreadsheet that you have in front of you, and I made extra copies, and it's available if anyone needs it, so. The dollar amount in blue at the very bottom, the $80 million, that's the total over the last five years. I've also broken it down by the individual federal projects. And if you'll note that each individual federal award has its own set of legal requirements and stipulations. And by that, I mean with Title I funds, it can only be used for the specifics of high-poverty children for Title I. We've talked about in the past Title II for staff development and Title III for EL students. We've got kind of a refurbished pot in Title IV, and then we've got a large amount of money in IDEA and preschool, those are our special ed needs, and Carl Perkins. Those are our large recurring grants that are authorized every year. That's the biggest source of funding. Now, I do want to point out something. If you'll look at, there are two columns. It says before ARRA in 2009, and another one in 2010 that says includes ARRA. In 2009, under the Obama administration, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act was implemented as a way to, as a stimulus package to get our economy going. So, if we look at 2009, our total award, I just put in the total award, is $13 million. In 2010, it jumped up to over $27 million. $14 million was stimulus money, that a huge amount of money was infused, pushed into the school districts in order to grow our economy. And over, the state also used an additional, how many, 14 million, 12, 14 million, in the BEP funding formula to balance the state budget. Jeff and I were trying to remember the other day, it was 240, 260 teaching positions that were saved by that ARRA money, the ERA money, that came through the state in the BEP funding formula. It saved the Coordinated School Health Grant. It saved the Safe School Grant, and there was an attendance grant that came through. So, we saved considerable number of positions and a considerable amount of money with the ERA funds. And let's see, Matt? Let's pull up that ERA. Yes. Now, this is truly one of those pictures, I think I've walked past 100 times and didn't realize, but it's actually posted by the front door. And in 2009, we had to post this ARRA sign all around the building, and I think the only one that's left is the one in the front, and that said that if we are aware of anyone illegally or improperly using these federal dollars, that the comptroller's office, the state comptroller's office, would be notified. So, I think that sign can come down now, because our ERA funds have been used, I think we finally used them up in 2014. I think that was the last time we used our ERA funds, so Jeff, I think we can replace that sign now. And so, the huge change, let's go back to the fun facts, and we'll come back to ERA in just a minute, because I think that deserves just about 45 seconds all by itself. But some of the fun facts, we talked about the $80 million, and the fiscal year that just ended last year, combined federal and state, it was just a little, it was 17.8 million. Now, the benefit of having these federal funds, some of them allow us to carry those funds over into the next year. So, if they're not fully spent, we have another 12 months to spend that money. Not all of the grants. Carl Perkins ends June 30. It's what they call drop dead. But the titles, IDEA, those big pots of money, what's not spent? Now, there are some limitations, but I don't want to get into the weeds too much. But back in September, I gave a presentation on the amount of money that the individual schools bring in, and if you remember, it's a test, it was 17.7 million that all of the individual schools, the revenue received. And that's comparable to the amount of federal and state awards, grant awards that we received just this year. So, one other little fun fact was the number of positions. There's 248 certified and classified positions that these federal funds fully fund. That includes all of their benefits. And the biggest, the biggest is the IDEA fund that covers all these. How much did we spend on professional development? $1.4 million. That does not include the cost of the subs. That's just what we paid in the contracts. So, those are just a few fun facts, just some numbers to mull over and give you something to think about. Okay, Matt, what's next? Oh, let's go back to the ERA slide for just a minute. Okay. What changed with ERA a lot? Not only this huge infusion of money, IDEA alone received $8.4 million in addition to their $6.7 million recurring allocation that they already had. So, with this ERA money, we were highly restricted on how we could spend that money. But what really changed, not just the huge infusion of money, but it's the transparency, accountability, and the amount of reporting that went with this. And with that came additional monitoring. US Department of Education, the state monitored, and I think anyone who just felt the need to look at our federal books. So, the accountability and the reporting, this was the first time in the years that I've been doing this, that we had to report our expenses by line item. You've all seen Mr. Sandvig's line item budget. We also have that in federal. But we had to report our total expenses by line item for the first time ever. We had to report equipment purchases. We had to report contracts. We had to report the vendor, their address, their DUNES number, and that was done on a quarterly basis. And in addition to that, we also had to report our employees who were funded out of federal dollars. That helped in a lot of ways. It really helped us, even though it was a big swimming upstream at first, but it really helped us get our minds around how to handle all of that. And then in 2014, here comes the Uniform Grants Guidance, and Lauren, you've had a big taste of that. And the uniformity is what they wanted, the federal government, what they wanted us to do, is whatever we're doing in our federal funds or cafeteria funds, they also want us to do that in our general purpose operating funds. So, there's that uniformity. So, some big changes again in our reporting. So, Matt, let's go to the next fund. Okay. So, this is the big question, why do we do what we do? Federal funds, their relevance, their importance, and why are we talking about it now? Well, this is the end of our fiscal year. We are reporting funds to the state by all of those line items and all of the different levels and complexities. We are closing out these grants. And so, I thought I would end this presentation and show you some of our pictures that were on the website or on Tyra Pilgrim's Twitter page. And so, this is why we do this, because the General Purpose Operating Fund does not have enough money. These federal projects give us the ability to have these special projects that we wouldn't normally have in the general purpose fund. It gives us additional money above and beyond what we have. It gives us additional money above and beyond what we have. Oakland High School Mechatronics, this equipment that was purchased came from the Carl Perkins grant, hundreds of thousands of dollars to support this program. Okay, Matt? And this is truly, you can see a smile on a dental patient. When I look at these pictures, I think of the old, the old idiom, a picture is worth a thousand words. Well, and I also think, oh, it's also worth thousands of dollars. Because this dental program at Stewart's Creek, just on the inventory records, it had just over seven thousand dollars in equipment just for this, just for this dental program. So, and Matt, let's see what's next. Ah, okay. This is Read to Be Ready. This is Read to Be Ready Summer Grant, and it was, this picture was on our website. And it just ended, at the end of June. Now, this is truly one of my favorite pictures, and it's not my favorite, I'll show you that one next, but it's one of my favorite pictures. And this grant is just a little over two-hundred thousand dollars. But it's indicative of the amount of reporting that comes with this specific grant. There's more reporting for this one grant, two-hundred thousand dollars, than there is in the, all of the IDEA preschool and all of the Title grants combined. So when we report to the, to the state to get our money, we have to make copies of everything that we did, all of our checks, purchase orders, invoices. So we have hundreds of pages to, to support a reimbursement for two-hundred and two thousand dollars. So when I get frustrated, and I will have to say that it's not just me alone, it's beyond the frustration, I, the level of reporting, but I also want to, to mention Kathy Metter. She is our federal bookkeeper. And I will have to say that Kathy keeps so many people in line and she knows these federal laws and regulations. But she also does the, the request for federal funds. All of our federal dollars are reimbursement. We spend the money upfront and then we get reimbursed for it. So when Kathy has to submit this reimbursement, sometimes there is a high level of frustration and, and all. But then when I see this picture, and then it all comes very clear, becomes clear to me that this is why we do what we do, is to allow these children in this picture and all of the other pictures to have the opportunity to participate in programs that they may not have been able to participate in before. And so I'm going to leave you with this one last picture. And this is by far my favorite. And I see the intensity and I see that my role as a fiscal manager to oversee and provide oversight on these federal dollars is to ensure that the money that is appropriated for these children and all of these different grants is spent appropriately on these children. And I would say she represents to me why we do what we do and why we have the importance of these federal funds, so. But thank you very much. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to entertain any.
Questions for Ms. Williams, board?
Do the guidelines for federal funding allow for the administrative positions that facilitate this reporting? Like, for instance, you mentioned Kathy Metter. Is she able to be funded through these programs or do we fund her outside of, of federal dollars?
We fund her outside of federal dollars. She can be partially funded through federal dollars. But we can take from all of our federal dollars, we can take what's called indirect cost. And those indirect costs is just a small percentage, like one and a half percent. And then that money can transfer over to the general fund and it helps to cover the cost of the administrative function to administer. So Kathy Metter's position would be funded, human resources, any, any legal, any instruction, all of those positions could be funded indirectly through that amount.
My point for asking is, you know, not to get into the weeds of, of how things are funded, but just to point out, you, you mentioned the amount of compliance, the amount of reporting that is necessary for this six point six-four percent of the budget.
Right.
And a relatively small amount of dollars and yet a huge responsibility of reporting. And that one and a half percent can't possibly cover what it takes to, to do all of the reporting. It is indeed frustrating when there are so many regulations for, for what can be so impactful.
Right. I, I agree. And I think the trend will be, there will be more different levels of reporting. I think there will be more information required on the front end when we apply. So we will see the program, people become more and more involved with, with fiscal to provide a more accurate information on the front end. But they're requiring, in the application process, more and more information. Good point.
Other questions, board? Ms. Williams, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our tenth.
All right, for information only, per policy one point one oh eight nepotism, Sarah Beth Young is to be employed by Rutherford County Board of Education as a science teacher at Oakland High School.
Number eleven, director's update.
Director's update. Before we get started, I'd like to piggyback on what Ms. Williams talked about here in terms of CTE. I know we got this last week, you know, from James Evans, but I'm sure our audience didn't get this. But anyway, last week at the CTE Institute, where Commissioner McQueen and the governor stood up, and they were talking about the Tennessee pathways in education. Commissioner McQueen specifically cited Rutherford County Schools for our CTE program for its partnership with Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce as a models, as a model for others for workforce development and industry to follow. I think that's, that's, that's great when you have people speaking on behalf of how this funding is being used. All right, update on director's goals. Well, first of all, let's, let me say that we've started on the goals. I've gotten input and I would do seek input for, from board members. I do have, I have received some input from one board member. Our goals obviously will be what we call SMART goals, strategic, measurable, attainable, you know, timely. I forget, forgot relevant, becomes, relevant becomes more timely. And they should, every one of them should address the needs of our students, that whether that be quantitatively or qualitatively. And I'll be working on these. I do anticipate having these with, in collaboration with the central office personnel, having those to present sometime in late August where the sixty days expires. And once again, I would request, respectfully request input. I do, and looking into my contract, it, it does state that the board itself can develop goals, but I think we'd be practicing duplicity if we did that. So, you working with me to develop goals, to get our system in our district, not only where it currently is, but beyond that, will be very beneficial.
Questions on this topic, board?
All right, school safety. We did get an update today on our, our recurring, recurring and our also one-time-only funding. It's a little bit less than what we, we stated, was estimated, but it's still going to be around two point one million dollars. And that course will be used over all of our schools. Now, it would be my suggestion in our August sixteen meeting to, to go into an executive session toward the end to discuss these things, in terms of the prioritize list, if that's something that you would entertain. I think that was, it's very important as we work from that high priority down, as we go forward each year, we need to make sure that we're, we're all comfortable with what we're doing. Mr. Kubli has worked very, very patiently and worked hard in preparing this grant that he will be submitting here in another week or so. The deadline for that grant to be submitted is August the thirteenth. He's already got all this survey material together along with, starting on the grant. He did also tell me the signs. I know that was, something was asked, the signs that was presented by Commissioner Reed. As we know, Commissioner Reed is going to purchase fifty signs, which means we're going to be purchasing twenty-five additional signs to meet those needs. We anticipate that to be brought to you probably on, on the sixteenth also. And possibly having those signs in place, it's a five-week turnaround, no later in
Questions?
The August thirteenth deadline, will there be freedom after that to appropriate funds as we meet on the sixteenth? Or will we meet on the sixteenth to just be told what's going to happen?
To go, to go, we will go over that. It will take five, it takes several weeks for the turnaround to take place. It takes about fourteen days. Once the, 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 the grant has been submitted, it takes about fourteen days for us to get confirmation.
Okay. But the board, will we have input as to what the priorities are in that grant?
That's what we will be doing on the sixteenth.
Okay.
The grant is just specifically for the funding. As far as the priority list, that, that will be something we will take into, in our executive session, cause we will look at every school's needs and, and discuss that from highest priority down to lowest priority.
If we're going to do an executive session to discuss those, kind of drill down specifics and on safety, is that something that, will we invite any of our law enforcement or anybody else in the community to?
I think it would be a good idea.
Our sheriff?
I do, I think it would be a great idea. We can do that.
Maybe the sheriff and all of the chiefs of the municipalities in the county.
Absolutely.
We know how much those signs cost.
Uh, in the ballpark figure, I think we got a discount, like thirty-five dollars a sign.
You know, I, I'm just, I just feel like that, I, I wouldn't know how to go about doing this, but I would think it would be relatively easy to do. But I can almost guarantee you that the, the general public will have many people that'd be willing to buy a sign two or three. I just, you know, I see no reason, although it's appreciated for Mr. Reed, who's certainly a friend of education, I, I see no reason for him to absorb the cost of fifty of these things when the general public would, would be delighted to help protect our schoolchildren. I would, I just feel certain of that, but I don't know how to go about raising that money. You could certainly do it on our website, I would think, and, just, just a thought. I don't, I don't know what you're going to do.
Any, any questions, board? Ms. Moore, Tennessee, T L N.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and we discussed last night, and you had asked me to look a little deeper into the new legislation that is going to require that Tennessee schools have posted in a prominent place the national motto. It's called the national motto in the Classroom Act, in God We Trust. And as far as the specifics go, first of all, the governor did sign it into law on April, I believe it was April the fourth. We are required to have it ready to go for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. Where to post and what format though is, is kind of a little bit loose. And I'll just read you what it says in the actual bill itself. It says that it may take the form of, but is not limited to either a mounted plaque or a student artwork. So there's some flexibility there. It requires that the, the saying be displayed in a prominent location where students are likely to see it. And some of the examples they gave in the legislation were school entryway, cafeteria, or other common areas.
Well, that's most helpful. I think, I think we sort of knew that. And putting it on the signs that we just talked about a minute ago is not going to work. And our, our attorney advised us against us anyway. So, my wife asked a good question today. She said, I'm sure the state is going to provide the labor to do this and the money. And I just looked at her and she said, that's what I thought. But at any rate.
That is another unfunded man.
Yes, I think that's exactly what it is.
You know, just in having thought about this and when I was looking over it, and I absolutely love the idea that they were getting creative with us, allowing, you know, opportunities for student artwork to be a part of this. I think in this particular situation, and with it actually being legislation, my thought would be that we would be better off finding something that's appropriate, a plaque, and that we be uniform and consistent throughout the school systems, both with the plaque itself or what it looks like, the style and where it's placed, whether it's over the front entryway or maybe, you know, over the front office. But we could certainly still do other things, creative things, but I think we ought to have that kind of formality to it, would be my recommendation.
I would agree with you. I think it needs to be consistent.
Yeah, we don't want to run the risk of somebody's artwork being taken down or something. And so, I don't think this is a situation where they're going to come out and inspect our schools, but we want to make sure that we're in compliance, certainly.
Does every school have a, the?
Freedom shrine? They do not.
So that won't necessarily, that'll work, but it can't be consistent at the same place. I don't know that that's, gosh, if we just have it there on the wall when people walk into the building, I mean, that, that would certainly, that would think be enough. Satisfy the law or the cafeteria, or, you know, I don't see a problem there. I'm sure the government will find a problem with it, but I don't see one.
I think, aren't the freedom, the freedom shrines, if I'm not mistaken, because I used to be a member of the Evening Exchange Club, those are done and sponsored by the exchange club. Does anybody know, is that still a project or something that they, the exchange clubs actively do? I mean, I'd love to see one in all of our schools, but I don't know if that's feasible or not.
Sure.
Do they normally have it? Constitution, Declaration of Independence, what are they?
And it's a pretty good size.
Cover quite an area.
Probably about ten feet.
Well, I've, you know, like, like all of you, I've seen, I've seen some of them, they're beautiful. I mean, you know, but I, I didn't know if every school had one or not. I haven't been to every school. Evidently not.
Anything else, Ms. Moore?
Um, well, I think I would probably be remiss as RTL in rep if I didn't mention and especially to remind our audience that might be watching, maybe all five of them, that this is election time and we have local and state elections going on. And of course, I'm very much of the opinion that if you don't vote, you don't get to complain. There are, of course, as we know, a couple of school board seats. There are several on the city school board, there's city council seats, there's county commission. So there's opportunities, obviously, to get involved and vote for both local candidates, but we also have, you know, other big elections coming up, including a new governor that'll be put in place after the primaries in August. So, early voting has already started. The actual election date is Thursday, August the second. That will also be the primary, the Republican and Democratic primary for those seats that are up or being run for in November. And I think, of course, this year, this gubernatorial seat, obviously, the governor has the opportunity to appoint his or her own commissioner of education. And of course, we all have shared and talked a lot this last, these last couple of years about our concerns with our Department of Education. There are some things they do very well, but there are some things that we, they really, really need to work on. And whether or not our new governor will make a decision to replace the current commissioner remains to be seen, but it's certainly something that we need to keep in mind too as, as we cast our votes.
I voted today, my wife and I did. I, I passed it along because I believe the lady told me that over forty-five hundred people had voted early so far, and that was noon today, so it's probably closer to five thousand by now, so. And that, and they said that was a reasonably good total for this, for this, the spot that we're in now, the number of days. So, I suggest with all those places that you just named and some more as well, it's probably going to be a big turnout, I would say. But by all means, vote.
Anything else, Ms. Moore, on T L N?
No, that's all.
Mr. Holliday? Thank you, Ms. Moore. Number thirteen, federal relations.
Will stand as presented in the work session.
Okay, general discussion, I have almost zero. Next meeting is August fourteenth, five o'clock, and prepare for an executive session on the sixteenth, as the director has said, on school safety. And I don't know, maybe I'm supposed to have something else, but I don't. And, do you have anything?
An ironic situation come up today, talking to a, a client who's a, a general contractor, and he asked me if we knew of any masonry contractors. And with what happened last night, I, I kind of chuckled. I don't think he thought it was funny, but I had to explain, but artisans are worth their weight in gold presently. I had a... Try to, try to have, try to get some of that work done at this time, and possibly difficult to find, and possibly even more expensive to have the service. So I, I, I feel for our general contractor, because it's, it's an issue that permeates middle Tennessee presently.
I, I know you all get the questions and comments from the general public, and I get them, too. And the two that I hear all the time, naturally now, involve Rock Vale, and, which is natural. And the two comments I get frequently, and that is that there will never be enough room at Rock Vale for this, for the projects that's going on out there. And I assure them that there is. And then they want to know about the road. How, how's the traffic going to get there? And you mentioned this last night, and if you mentioned it tonight, I apologize, Ms. Lee, I, I, I don't think you did, but the road has been cut through the back, hasn't it, for traffic? And it's going to come out where?
Armstrong, isn't it?
I, I just went blank on the name of the road.
Armstrong Valley, or?
No.
It doesn't go that far down. There's veterans, and then there's another.
It's a, it's a curvy, I, I just went blank, I apologize, on the name of the road. But yes, that, that has been cut through.
It's a, when we went to the Rock Vale picnic on, on the 4th, I'd drove through there and went back and looked at it, it's, it's, man, tell you what, that's a big place. But it's not as big as Stewart's Creek, it's with square footage, but it's, it's, it's going to be great.
Close.
Yeah, it is close. It's about 20,000, I believe, difference. But it's, it's going to be, it's going to be terrific. It really is. It's going to be beautiful. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to highlight, I, I have indeed shared with the director some ideas that I've had about goals for the future. And as board members continue to think about this and, and perhaps share their thoughts with the director in anticipation of, of the goals that we'll have, I just wanted to highlight, I think it's important that we very intentionally welcome new board members in September, as we anticipate some new board members coming on, and perhaps a board retreat in, as, as part of that plan. The director mentioned in our work session last night, the almost constant evaluation of the E Plan, and making sure that that continues to be relevant. And Mr. Odom started for us a emphasis toward two-to-one technology and how this board keeps that as a priority. One of the things is not only that we have these goals, but that we prioritize them, and which one is our highest priority. And as much as technology is important, now we have this school safety funding. And, and how do we balance school safety versus that two-to-one technology, and which of those is going to be a greater priority? I think the board could have some, some insight into weighing in as, as to which of those rules the day. We also continue to struggle with testing from the state, and my personal feeling is, as the state continues to falter in that characteristic, that it may be more important that we take on a climate of ACT, where that ACT test, the director mentioned in his interview process, that a culture of ACT that extends all the way into the elementary schools, where we're preparing for that, is really important. And, and I'm, I'm excited to hear the director's thoughts about, about how that comes into, into real, reality. We are so effective in CTE training, and the director has highlighted tonight about our workforce development partnership and, and how that's recognized as a model, but I don't want us to be satisfied. And, and what's the next page in CTE? What can we do in the future? And where are the threats? I feel like that charter schools can be a threat to Rutherford County. We don't have charter schools in Rutherford County right now, but as we continue to struggle with funding, I think about charter schools and, and think if we miss being able to cover all of the bases for all of the students, that's where charter schools will gain a foothold in Rutherford County, and they come in, in a niche and say, "We'll provide this one characteristic." And as challenging as it seems to this board that we would be all things to all people, it is perhaps the strategy to ward off charter schools interfering with our effective public school system. And finally, I've really been struck with the BEP Capital Improvement Funding, where they provide $139 per student, I'm sorry, per square foot. The BEP Capital Improvement Funding would provide $139 per square foot. Our best efforts are that we can build at $190 a square foot, and we're better than anybody else in the state. That discrepancy needs to be highlighted to our legislators as we think about the coming legislative session in 2019, as we think about interacting with those who are running for office, and as, again, as we think about the goals that this board and the director will develop over the next 45 days.
Piggyback on this, Mr. Lee, what, what did our bid come in, what were we, for Rock Vale High School? 62 million. What was the bid for the high school proposed for Wilson County that I showed you?
I'm sorry, that 86 million did not include athletic fields. That was an add-on. Our 62 million does.
Next one, point. All good points, Mr. Holliday. I, I would say two, and I brought this up to the director tonight, and, and he, he, in his very best way possible, he ignored me. And you know, and he's already, he's already told you that he would have the, the strategy and the goals set and ready to go by late August, and so I'm sure he will meet that deadline. But I, I would like to remind you that, that we gave 60 days, which is fact, there's nothing wrong with that, but evidently, we never looked at the calendar. And I, I'd just like to point out that the first week that he was on duty, and it says quite clearly, July 1, his 60 days begins, the first week, he had no staff to work with at all. They were off. And they've been off every Friday by, by contract since then. So really, he's going to be doing this in more like 45 days. So, so let's be fair here, and I, I think we can be a little bit, well, I think we can be at least sympathetic. But he's already also told you, and I want to repeat what you said, because you told me that, and that is that you welcome input from any board member. And, and I would assume that you will probably get some in the next few days. Is there anything else on that or any other, any other topic? Next time we meet will be the 14th. First time in memory that we've changed secretaries in mid-meeting. I don't know, I, well, I'm not going to say that happened. We, we were in good shape either way, weren't we? Anything else? Or we adjourn. Thank you.